I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, February 28, 2019. Please rise and pay your respects.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please note the role with his absence for Hunwick, Citizen Curtis.
Okay. Noted.
Could I move to item four, approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for February 28, 2019 of the regular Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second that.
The move by Mr. Berger, second by Mr. Nold. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Move to approval of the minutes for December 13.
I move that we approve the Planning Commission's regular meeting minutes, December 13, 2018.
I'll support.
The move by Mr. Nold, second by Mr. Berger. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item six, public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. So, if there's anyone out in the public that wishes to speak on items that are not on the agenda, you're welcome to do so at this time. Please come up to the lectern here in the center, give your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you hear my gavel, it means your three minutes is up.
Okay, before you start the timer, I've got... I just want to discuss what appears to be a preponderance of circumstances that makes an area of this community feel like their rights are being violated. What you're going to see here on the first page of that packet that I gave you is an application for a child caring institution in Oxford Township on Barber Road. The property is owned agricultural; it does not allow institutional uses. There's many errors in the application itself. I just want to point out that this is the application for licensing in this facility, and it says "10 residents." The second page is the certificate of occupancy. That was granted by you, Mr. Berger, a member of the Planning Commission. If you see, it says it's a single-family residence, 8,928 square feet in the agricultural division, and the use group is R3. R3 does not include childcare institutions. The next page you're going to see on there is a letter from House of Providence to the Attorney General. There's a statement on that letter that says "The facility has been welcomed by the local governing body," and that's the facility of 10 children, which is a commercial institution. "Please feel free to contact Deanna Cushing, Oxford Township Deputy Supervisor, who will verify the governing body's position on the facility. I've checked with the township board; officially, there has been no statement made whatsoever at a township meeting or by the township board of any position on this facility. However, these are the kind of things that keep getting put out in public as fact. We're asking for those to be remedied." The House of Providence is a commercial institution. The next page there shows a child caring institution; payment ranges from $130 to $400 per day per child. This is a pay-for-profit service, or pay-for-service entity. The next thing you're going to see is an email, which is a request from the House of Providence to withdraw the remediation plans for certain aspects of the House of Providence property there. So, this property is not cleared for residential use, but statements are being made that it is. It is not. The next page you will see is communications from the DEQ that are relating to a public meeting that will be held here at the township, April 9. And that is because of the level of lead and the contamination on the property and the public's right to know. So, they will be having a meeting here at the township with the DEQ, the Environmental Health Department, and anybody here at the township that would like to come, but the public will be noticed that this meeting will be ongoing. Some components of what are being said here tonight aren't accurate, and I'm going to address those in that later section. But what you're going to see here in this next page is, it says "An original license for a child caring institution shall not be issued if the license would substantially contribute to the excessive concentration of facilities such as these." Other people are going to talk more about it, but we have Crossroads for Youth already and Oxford has 92 beds licensed. It's an excellent facility; it was started by members of my neighborhood. That facility is not full; it still has plenty of capacity. Putting another residential institution out in this area would be detrimental to the existing use we have here and a burden to the township. The next page there talks about membership of a planning commission. The membership shall be representative of important segments of the community, in accordance with the major interest as they exist in local government. And they actually mention agriculture. The membership shall also be representative of the territory in general. So, what I did is I put the location of the Planning Commission members on the map. I want to see. We know that we've already been told that nobody here has been assigned an important segment. Mr. Berger, you're government, right? We've got other government people here, but there's nobody representing agriculture on the board. So, what I did was I mapped it out. And what you're going to see here on this next page is a map of the current Planning Commission members and where they live. And you're going to see it's not representative of the entire territory. As a matter of fact, all but one of the Planning Commission members is in a zoning district that's one acre or smaller, yet an overwhelming majority of the township is larger than one acre zoning, but they're not represented. Agriculture is not represented. We have three Planning Commission members who live right next door to each other. We have two over here. And we asked that our segment be represented, and instead of that, they reappointed somebody from this quadrant here with the three bubbles, right? So, we don't feel like our area is being represented. This next page speaks for itself, and that's the duty of public officers such as yourself to make sure the law is followed. You know that the law clearly says you shall be representative of important segments, and you're not. I'm asking that this Planning Commission step up to the plate, that our Planning Commission Chair reaches out to the township and says, "We need to know what important segments we represent so the public here knows who to speak to about any particular issue, whether it be agriculture or commercial development in town." This last page is a summary here. It's a public meeting notice. And what you're going to see is it's full of typos, full of typos. This is what was published in the paper for the September meeting. It was not posted within the 15 days required notice. That was an open meetings violation. It was not remedied. We have a lot split on the hot property that was done. The first split was done illegally. That was never fixed. We had a required public hearing for the private road on that property. It was not done. You knowingly approved deficient minutes. We have no representation on the PC despite the fact that the state law says we should. You've ignored our request for the proper amendments to our zoning ordinance that would make us comply with our master plan. And now, we find out that despite the fact that multiple members of this community have asked for the information for tonight's meeting, in terms of what was promised on the public notice that the information would be provided, none of us who requested were provided a copy of the planner's report or the attorney review. That puts us at a disadvantage when we want to speak to these ordinance amendments. I would propose with that that you allow the public hearing to continue because the people have come here today to speak. But I also propose that you don't close the public hearing, and you continue the public hearing on to a date where it's properly noticed and the information is properly provided to the people so we can adequately address the concerns that we may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, could I just ask the people out in the audience a question? How many of you did come to the township and request the packet for this evening's meeting?
We can't hear you.
Oh, is it? Hello? Can you hear that? For those of you out in the public, can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. You've got to get real close. How many of you did go to the township office and request the meeting packet for this evening? Four? And then, of those people, you didn't get the planner's report? Okay. Just making a note. For items that are not on this agenda, is there anyone else out in the audience wishing to speak on a topic not listed? Okay, with the gentleman in the back? I've got all four of you. I'll get you.
My name is Larry Rosner. I live at 1830 Cobblestone Lane, Oxford, Michigan. Since 2005, you've had many meetings. I've been to many of those meetings. We've had, since 2005, this book. This book has been looked at. That's our master plan. I've talked about that. Nothing has happened. Our citizens came here multiple times, so many times we had to have police officers here, and we requested that the board take action. The board did not take action. The board sat on it. The board members here, the board is responsible for the current major problems we have in this township. The board is. Had they taken action on what the representatives, what we, the people, live here in this township, we would not be having mobs of people, fine people, spending time and money coming here because this book would have been followed. Our request would have been followed. So, the board is primarily responsible. I've talked to the township supervisor and said, "Did you interfere with the board?" His comment was, "Absolutely not. He only attended two meetings." That was the two meetings where you had so many residents back before this was even going on. That police officers were there. So consequently, we're at this juncture. There's going to be lots of talk later, but, you know, you all have the book, and I'll give you some papers here that we have presented to the board. Thank you. So, thank you for your time, and I would hope if we run out of time or it gets concerned, we, the residents, should have a say in this meeting. Obviously, we didn't get very well notified, but someone sure did. Thank you.
Mister back? State your name and your address, please.
Thank you. Maggie Dunn, 3921 Barber Road. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to... Three quick things. There is often what may seem like a majority is just loud, and I just wanted to point out that I found out about 3:00 about the plans for some comments to come in protest against House of Providence. I know there's a lot of vitriol from about eight or so residents, and I...
You mean like 80?
Yeah. I'm sorry. And so, I just think, if I could be so forward as to ask if anybody's here in support of House of Providence being in this community, if you could just stand up?
How do people go with...
And if you're standing as well?
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't want to create any...
Absolutely. I just think it was important. And then, I'd just like to read this, for what it's worth. But again, we want to be a quiet, peaceful, we appreciate that you guys do follow the letter of the law, and you're doing things well, and we appreciate it. But I'd just like to read this. Redlining is an unethical practice that puts services out of reach of residents of certain areas based on race or ethnicity.
Thank you. As a reminder, when you come up for your public comments, either here in this section or when we get to the amendments section where there will be a public hearing, your comments need to be addressed to the Commissioner and not the general audience, okay? Okay, anyone else? Gentleman in the back? In the front? He was right behind you. State your name and address, too, at the lectern, please.
Good evening. Jim Yunus, Gardner Road, Oxford. Tonight's meeting agenda states proposed zoning amendments. My question to the Planning Commission, who put these amendments together?
Your Planning Commission.
Who?
The Planning Commission.
Okay. All right, so, can you tell me what the Zoning Enable Act means?
Yeah, that's an act that's put together to carry the common interests of the community and give guidelines for organizations such as ourselves to work within.
If we had solid zoning ordinance in the agriculture zone, we wouldn't be here tonight. For over 18 months, the taxpayers in the northeast quadrant have asked for additions and amendments that protect the taxpayers to no avail. A for-profit commercial business has been coddled and supported in this quadrant by the township managers in this building with no regard to the taxpayers and the township master plan. This commercial business has asked for a property tax abatement while using the taxpayers' police, fire, EMS, and schools. This commercial business could evolve into a juvenile prison which has far-reaching social and economic implications to the neighborhood. Oxford, Menomonee, and Edison Townships are now starting to realize this, among others. Tonight proposed amendments do not meet our request that we have put in writing to you, the township. It's time to review our request at this PC meeting. Further, this site that I'm talking about with a commercial business is loaded with lead. The DEQ is into it. You heard Kelly say there's going to be a meeting. It surprises a lot of people with the problems in Flint with the lead, Detroit on bottled water, the public schools in Detroit on bottled water for lead, that anybody would even think of putting children on a lead-soaked ground such as the 118 acres. I'm Barber Road. Thank you.
Dr. Bruce Myers, 3100 Delano, Oxford Township. Kelly had mentioned something about crossroads, and I'm not sure if everybody in the board is aware of it, but they do a great job. There is a desperate need throughout the state of Michigan for more foster families, foster homes, except for Oakland County. Oakland County is far outpacing the need for placement, and that's just not something I'm coming up with. That was even on the radio the other day, and I was surprised. But in Oxford Township, we have Crossroads for Youth. I remember when it was still Camp Oakland, I used to go out there and do presentations. But right now, this was started by the Moores, or the Judge Moores, and these are all people from the horse country. Right now, they have room for 92, Kelly said 92, I thought it was 93 homes or placements. Right now, they hover between 50 and 53 in attendance, and some of those actually live at home and are busting every day for the program. They're in the process of building a new facility on the south side, I'm sorry, the north side of the road, and that's going to be all new for the 93 that they have room for. They actually have a school on the grounds there, so the children are actually able to interact with each other and with people and learn from other things, not the virtual academy on the computer and being isolated from the community. These foster children need to have skills, develop skills, that as they get older, they can cope with life. And that's where Crossroads for Youth is. Crossroads is a great program. They've been around for many, many years. I can't say enough good things about them. But they are still in the township. Why are we allowing competition and steamrolling as opposed, I shouldn't say just fast-tracking, but steamrolling another facility through that is actually going to be in competition with Crossroads? I support Crossroads a whole lot. There is not enough said in this township or in the county about how much good work they do. They are a phenomenal facility. So, I'd like to keep that in mind as we seem to be trying to expand, again, beyond what the needs are in the community, especially in Oxford Township. We have a facility down there. We shouldn't even think about adding more facilities that would be potentially exempt from taxation. Why should they be tax-free? Especially when they provide services. Camp Oakland has been doing a great job of, I don't want to say policing themselves. Speaking of police, it's like I was here at a meeting when they did have the police come in and intimidate us. Do we really need to have a deputy here? I don't think anybody here today is going to be out of control. And I know at the meeting where the deputies came in and intimidated us, there was no bad language, no gaveling, no excitement. So, it's like I'm feeling a little bit intimidated by the actions of the Planning Commission nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can I address the board?
Yes, just state your name and your address, please.
Nicole, 1308 Woolley Road, Oxford.
Okay.
I would like to say that I am, I was in Camp Oakland as a child, and the program was definitely, it's not even on the same level as House of Providence. House of Providence, there's something so sweet about that program. When you walk in there and you see the love of all those staff and how they prepare each room for these kids, and they feel loved. I didn't have that at Camp Oakland. I felt like I was institutionalized. This facility is absolutely amazing. They took me through a tour, and I cried as they showed me every room that was prepared for these kids. These kids are going to feel welcomed and loved, and they're going to be world changers because they're going to feel like somebody loves them and are invested in them. I mean, I can tell you by experience that it is amazing. This program is absolutely amazing. And I was in this program, and I came back and moved back into Oxford because I thought it was a great area. And I just hope and pray that this facility is not, you know, I pray that it's not taken out. This facility has, these people are just, they just love these kids. It's not institutionalized. They feel free. They feel loved. They don't feel like they're just a child in the system. And that's all I have to say. I can speak for that, that I was in Camp Oakland, and it's a lot different. There is no comparison, no comparison whatsoever. And I am so happy with Jay and Maggie Dunn and what they're doing in this facility. It's not like anything else. And I've been in foster care, Camp Oakland, Children's Village, and it all, and it's all institutionalized. What they're doing is amazing, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on items that are not in the agenda?
My name's Roger Silvis, 295 Coryell Drive, Oxford, Michigan. I know the board needs to make their decision based on the letter of the law, but I'd like to share some facts with the group behind me as I address the board. You may not be aware, but Michigan ranks 48th in the nation when it comes to foster care systems, or actually, third worst in the nation. At any given time, there's almost 3,600 kids in the state of Michigan waiting to be adopted. Why does Michigan rank so bad? It's because the time in which the kids enter the foster care system and have success through that system and are either reunited with their family or adopted is poor. House of Providence is going against the grain. From their inception in 2012 with the girls that they've had over the years, they've had a 95% success rate. That means that those girls, within an average time of 18 months, have been reunited with their biological family, have been adopted, or on some occasions, under guardianship. House of Providence, I also want to say, for those who've mentioned Crossroads for Youth, myself, my wife, and my daughter personally serve at Crossroads once a month, making a meal for the kids there. So, we personally participate in supporting Crossroads as well. But are we going to turn our back on those kids in the state of Michigan who have no place to go? Those who are traumatized? Or the story I heard of the lady who heard growling noises in her house next door and called animal control to go get that girl, only to find out, you know, she thought it was an animal, but animal control came and found a seven-year-old girl tied up who'd gone through human trafficking. It was House of Providence that took that girl in. It's organizations like House of Providence that have this success rate with these troubled youth so that instead of being dependent on the state from cradle to grave, they end up having a chance to contribute back to society. I would love to have an organization like that in Oxford. Thank you.
Sir?
I'm confused. I have a letter from a resident.
You can come on up to the lectern. State your name and your address.
My name is Carol Beckett. I reside at 5717 Lake George Road in Dryden. But I am speaking for Larry and Amanda Shelton, who own property in Oxford Township. I'm not sure if I should read it now, or, because this is part of the agenda. Do you...
Yeah, that would be under the, excuse me, that would be under the public testimony in the open hearing.
And we're not there yet.
No.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Yes, please.
My name is Kathy Black. I live at 691 South Baldwin in Oxford, and I just want to add my support to the House of Providence. Fear is a terrible thing. I've seen it with the girls who come into the House of Providence, and I've seen it among some of my neighbors. And I have to tell you that there's nothing to fear here. These children are given love and acceptance, and it hurts me that Oxford is not giving them love and acceptance. So, I just want you to know that not everybody is against. I am one, but I have many friends that support the House of Providence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Mac Beckett. I reside at 5717 Lake George Road, and I came specifically for Peg and Hutch Culver, who are out of the state right now. They live at 3385 Delano in Oxford. And I just, coincidentally and appropriately, there was an article in the Free Press today regarding institutionals, homes. I want you to know that I am not against foster care. I was a foster care parent, so I am all for that, but I'm not for the House of Providence and the institution that they would like to provide. Now, I have handouts here. I just want to read a small section of it, and it's six pages long, and I don't want to take up your time for that, so I can leave a handout. But I would like to read just part of it. According to dispatch from January 1st to 2017 to November 30th, 2018, 502 emergency calls were made on behalf of the residents of the shelter over that 23-month timeframe. There, here are what the 9/11 calls were for. 315 for missing persons, 12 for rapes, 66 assaults, 31 suicide attempts, and 22 ambulance So that's really, I wanted to say, I'll leave these handouts, and you can take a look at them.
Thank you. You can just pass them to me. I'll get them. Give me these, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak on issues not on the agenda?
I don't know if this is on the agenda, but it's, so we're, tell me if I'm in the wrong place. We're both adoptive parents. We have two adopted children. We live at 3401 Jonathan Road.
Oh, forgot.
John, Yurima. Yeah. And I think what's happening is, we're getting conflated with that we don't agree with foster care or adoption, or, like I said, we have two biological children, we have two adopted children. We are completely 100%. No one's more supportive to that than we are. We live in an area that we're trying, and so if there's so many, if there's a group coming in to change the ordinance or change the zoning, we live in an agricultural area. We moved here for this, for this purpose, with our children, with our kids, and they're all in college now. But, I mean, we're not, I think what's happening is, we're getting associated with that we don't agree with adoption. I mean, this is what's happening. We're going to talk about how wonderful this place is, and it could be wonderful. I don't know. But if they're in an agriculturally zoned area, is it proper? And that's what, I guess, we're asking from you. But we're not a bunch of bad people because we have horses and we've moved here to have property. It's not, it's not, it's, so that's all I want to say. But anyway, that's, well, we have two kids from Korea. We went through the program. We tried to adopt kids locally. It's really difficult, and I don't think it's because there isn't places to put them. There's a lot of red tape, there's a lot of bureaucratic BS that you have to go through to get kids from this area. So we are, nobody is more, no more heartbroken than what's happening, but we did our part. We came here because we want to have an area that has space for horses and space for animals. But do not coordinate, do not say that because we don't want them here, that we have some problem with adoption or helping children. No one does more than us. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Anyone else, excuse me, anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Sir?
Jason Dunn, 3921 Barber Road, House of Providence. Appreciate you guys' time. Just wanted to take a moment. Pretty much everything that we hear about lead and foster care and institutions and all the chaos that we hear, whether for in Lansing or here, you see all over the places, all a lie. We've worked extremely hard with DEQ, and we have NFAs on two of the parcels that are there. We all know that, the township knows that. We did that before we broke ground on the beautiful house we just finished, and so all that's taken care of. All the chaos is lead so dangerous and poisonous, really, for the Planning Commission, but also for the community, is all a lie of just a few haters that they really just don't want these kids out in this area. And so that's why we've had a fight from the very beginning, before we actually signed the purchase agreement, the fight began, and it's a much bigger issue than what we hear and so, than what we say. Secondly, we're not an institution. We may have a license that's a CCI, Child Caring Institution, but we're really just a state-licensed residential facility that works with kids that are seven to 17, that are really innocent victims of people that have hurt and abused them, and we create a very familial setting. And so I appreciate what people have said, but we also bought property out here as well to have horses and animals, but I think horses and animals and people belong together. It's very therapeutic. It helps kids to heal and to be well, and the very reason that House of Providence purchased the property that we're at, to be able to reconcile all that together, to be able to see kids so they're not cradle-to-grave foster care, but they have the privilege and the opportunity to have a childhood that every single child deserves. And so we've done all the proper things. We've never tried to change the ordinances, the lies that are out there. We don't, we haven't tried to change the ordinances. We have all the rights to be where any single-family residential home is. That's part of the state law that's there, and so that gives us the right, really, to be anywhere that a home can be built. And so I just want to clarify some of the lies, because it's a lot of lies after lies and beyond lies and more lies, so we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Of the, how many, how many children at the facility? Because this does say 10.
It did say 10 at the beginning, but...
You want to clarify that?
We will have six. We are in the process of working with the state to help to amend the law that if you do have above 20 acres, then you could do 10. So many townships and cities, individuals have, that do like us, have the ability to go up to whatever there is. Crossroads has 93 beds that are available, so it's kind of crazy that we're fighting for four more kids, but it's really six kids that will move in with what we'll have, and then we'll work to do 10. And we chose 10 on purpose because the whole plan of what we want to do is to be familial. We don't want to warehouse kids. We're not looking to institutionalize. We like to keep it a small familial piece. So state law says six, and the township has stayed with that. The township attorney has said that, and so we're working in the process to be able to amend that so that individuals like ourselves, when they move into other townships or other places, don't have to go through the battle and the fight. We do have a Boys Home in Rose Township, that we have the privilege to have 12 kids there if we wanted to. But even at that point, 10 is still our number. That's what we do. We think 10 works really well on doing that. So the actual application that you have there is one that was fixed, and the state does have the correct one with six, because we thought we did have the law changed, but then Governor Schneider, for whatever reason, didn't sign it. So it's pocket vetoed, so we're working hard to do that, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? It's a race. I'll get you next, sir, in the back.
Cindy Unis, 1366 East Davison Lake Road, Metamora. I just wanted to say that all we are asking is that this is all done legally, and so far, contrary to what Jason just stated, there are, we have boxes and boxes of things that state that many of this stuff has been done illegally, this is zoned agricultural, and this is not a place to put these kind of homes in the middle of the agricultural horse country. And nothing has been done on the straight and narrow, so I don't care what he tries to say, that is not true.
Sir? State your name and your address, please.
Ricky G. Teddy, 1850 Oak Trail, Oxford. I was involved with, I am involved with House of Providence, and just as Jay Dunn had said, a lot of these things are just lies. We've done every bit of due diligence from the beginning. It isn't our fault that foster care falls in the agricultural zoning. That's what it happens to be. That's the state law, or the law, whatever, or the zoning that you guys have. It's not, you know, it's not a lie. It's there. We've done our due diligence. I'm one of seven kids. I grew up in the area, and no way, shape, or form do we ever interfere with anybody's horses or, you know, or their land. I mean, it's massive out here. These people have just made lies and lies and lies. You know, they call it God's country. These kids don't belong out here. The only partial, correct thing that they've said is, this is God's country, and these are God's children, and they belong here. And there's nothing with this lead. This issue has been resolved. I don't know how many times we've got to go over it, and how many times we've got to sit there and argue with it, if there was an issue with it. Why hasn't DEQ been out there and hounding them and shutting them down? Because it's been resolved, and it's not even lethal. It's not even harmful to what these people are saying. I deal with lead and dirt every day. This stuff is not what these people are saying. It's been, you know, it's, it's fine. It's been handled, and it's at a level that is safe. You know, everybody's all in uproar over flit comparing this to them. Maybe these people should check their homes for lead pipe. They were built prior to the 80s. I bet you that's in there. I bet you they have lead pipe, so, you know, they're worried about things that are, you know, have been corrected and are not detrimental to these children. And I grew up, like I said, I was one of seven. My wife was one of four. I have, you know, family that could fill this room three times, and if something happened to me and my wife tomorrow, there'd be no one other than Jay and Maggie Dunn, and that I would want them in their care, because they're the greatest, and they're the best at what they do. And Oxford deserves to have them out here, and they deserve to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please come up to the lectern and, okay, I'll get you next.
My name's John Mitchell. I live at 1308 Woolley Road. I'm an Oxford resident. I grew up in the city of Pontiac, and I grew up in the, basically, the system my whole life, in and out of trouble. And I wish that somebody like Jay and Maggie would have found me when I was a kid. I think my life, the heartache that I went through for the majority of my life, could have been spared if I would have had some people who truly loved me and cared about me and invested in me and told me that I was worth more than what I was doing and what I was told. I, I finally found the Lord and overcome all this stuff, right? Convicted felon, I live in Oxford. Do you guys want me to leave? If you check my rap sheet, you might want me to leave, because you might be scared that something might happen. Not these kids. I have a house right around the corner from here, and I paid money for it. I pay taxes in this town, and I don't think that we should discriminate on people, because if somebody would have loved me when I was a kid, I think that my life would have turned out differently. It turned out good now because of Lord Jesus Christ. And I just want to, I hear these things about my friends. These people are my friends. These people are the most godly people that I know. I love these people. These people love these kids, and it makes a difference in these kids' life. These kids might not end up in prison like I was. I just want to say that Oxford should be blessed and honored to have these people out here. That's all I got to say.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
Jenny Benson, 3270 Barber Road, Oxford. I, I think that the very first meeting that we had after we found out that this compound was being planned in the neighborhood... [laughter] We went to the township board, and one person stood up and mentioned race in the conversation. No one at any meeting since then has just, has talked about it at all. None of them did. The one person has never shown up to any of these meetings again, and the rest of us have been here every day, and we don't, we aren't concerned with race with these kids. It's been fed to the rest of these people because it's an easy take for them to understand why we don't want them in the neighborhood. We live on a street with about nine people in a one-mile stretch. When the Duns moved in, they more than doubled the population of our street with just their own kids. Now they want to build three or four other buildings...
Everyone, she's speaking to the commission, okay? Please.
And put as many as 10 in each one of these buildings. They say it's no big deal to put another four kids, and that's an extra $1,000 a day in their pockets that they want for each of those homes. That's why they're trying to expand it. They're saying they're, they're trying to help amend the law. What they've done is hired a lobbyist and gone to Lansing and are trying to get the laws changed for, to help themselves. Now, the last committee didn't see it. All they heard was, oh, it's for the kids, so we got to do it for the kids. None of us are saying that the, that this house is bad for kids, or that they do a terrible job. We're saying it belongs on a paved road. It belongs where kids can walk to town, to the party store, to the movie theater. Kids this age can get jobs. Kids can go to school. These folks are planning on keeping them six miles from town, where the only place they could possibly go is to another neighbor's house. That does concern us, but the big thing that I have a problem with is the traffic it involves. It's, this is a business. This is a big business. If they get all the kids that they want up there, it's a million and a half dollar-a-year business for them. And you're planning on moving it into a neighborhood where we have almost no traffic. There are hours of the day that I used to be able to just, you know, ride my horse up and down the road, or drive my tractor up and down the road, never see another person. And it's already busier because they're up there. Now they want to triple and quadruple the number of people in the neighborhood. It's not fair to us. It will definitely lower our property values. No one moves to the country to be, you know, to be in a private area, quiet area. I specifically moved where I moved because I couldn't see another house from where I live. And they're talking about moving a compound, a big business, with another 30, 40 kids up there, plus all the staff that they have. I think they say they have like 15 staff for the eight or 10 kids that they have. In Detroit, they openly operate as an institution. There is no limit to the kids that they can have. They've only asked for eight to 10 there. They also bought a location in Rose Township. They can have 12 there only because the township went to court there and prevented them from splitting the property and building more buildings there and expanding it. They have limited them to 12 kids there. House of Providence has only asked for 10 there, but that's why it's limited, not because they're a group home. A group home gets paid about $28 per day, per child, in their age group range. An institution gets paid anywhere between $128 and $300 per day, per kid. This is a business. Don't mistake it as any kind of group home or foster home. This is a business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda? I'm going to get her first, but, okay, or you can flip-flop.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I was always taught...
I need your name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Pam Hurley. I live at 1631 Harvard Court, Oxford, Michigan.
Thank you.
I was always taught that you can never love too much, you can never care too much, you can never give too much. And Oxford, I think that you would be an awesome community if you would reach out further than yourselves, further than each other, further than your own, to give, to care, and to love. You could never do that too much. I just wanted to encourage you with that, and say I would be really, really honored to be in a, in a community that not only had crossroads, but also had House of Providence and has the fish food market. I'll take it all.
Thank you, sir.
Jason Roche, 3450 Hadley Road, Hadley, Michigan. I just want to say, if this is a compound or prison, and Jay and Maggie Dunn are the wardens, then please, take me away, because I would, I would be blessed to have grown up in prison like that. I would have a wonderful life... a wonderful life. I would have parents that loved me and I would have nothing to worry about. Not being a resident, resident of Oxford, would it be an issue with everybody here if I was to move to Barbara Road, purchase acreage, have 10 kids, 12 kids, 15 kids of my own, and purchase horses and live there with my children? I don't think it would be. I mean, I wouldn't be an institution because it would just be me and my family. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda for this evening? Okay, with that, we'll close out item number six, public comments. Can we move to item seven, commissioner's comments? Mr. Berger?
I have none at this time.
No?
None at this time.
Mr. Knoll?
I have no comment.
I have no comment. We'll move to the agenda, item number eight, the public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance 67A regarding Article II, Section II, definitions, Article III, Section V, schedule of use regulations, AG Agriculture, Article V Use Regulations. We have a little presentation from the commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the township has been working quite some time on some, in considering some possible text amendments, specifically to Section 3.5A, which is the agriculture zoning district. These text amendments have been considered by the ordinance review committee. They have been reviewing this for over a year now. And so they have now forwarded to the planning commission for your consideration. Some of the items that are, are proposed for changing would be Section 2.2, which would be the definitions. There are some definitions that would be added to the zoning ordinance. Section 3.5 would have modifications to both permitted and special uses. And then Section 5 of the zoning ordinance would include use regulations specifically for landing strips. But the main thing is the, the, the permitted and special uses in, within the ag zoning district that are proposed for modification. I might add that one of the thing that the township is considering to change with these text amendments is to modify the specific terminology for permitted and special uses to echo the state statutes. And what's important, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about family daycare homes, children, children. That is currently in the zoning ordinance already. What is being proposed is for it to have the specific terminology that echoes the state statute. The other thing to point out, too, is that the township can only zone in a manner that is allowed by Lansing, in accordance with the State Zoning Enabling Act. Local communities, cities, townships, villages, they get their power for zoning from Lansing in accordance with the State Zoning Act. The State Zoning Act states that if you have residential districts, you have to allow child, family daycare homes within that zoning district, if it's six or fewer. The township's hands are tied on this matter. We have to follow state statute. And what we're doing is simply making these modifications to comply with the state statute. But I, I wanted to point out, there's other items, though, that, that the ordinance review committee has been working long and hard on. They didn't, they involved such things as the state, the Right to Farm Act. There's changes regarding composting. There's changes regarding dog kennels. There's a number of other tweaks that are also being considered here for tonight. So these are the proposed text amendments. Mr. Chairman, tonight's purpose is to hold the public hearing. I understand that there's been some concerns that all the information isn't available. Tonight is scheduled, the public hearing. And so by state, in accordance with the State Zoning Act, we are holding the public hearing this evening. As in any zoning text amendment, the planning commission is a recommending body. The planning commission will make a recommendation to the township board, and it is the township board who has ultimate authority on these matters. So the first step, though, is the public hearing. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I just gonna point out that, you know, our committee, we have a subcommittee on the planning commission that's been looking at this for quite some time. We began to start looking at the, the uses in this area. There was a joint meeting held here at the township last year. And there's been some people that came up and alerted us to some of the uses that were in the agricultural district that shouldn't be there, such as mass composting facilities or industrial composting facilities and things like that. So our committee has taken its time to review public comments from previous meetings, written documents from people out in the community and what they think should be in this, public comments from past meetings, and tried to put it all together, take out what we thought we heard from the public that they definitely didn't want in there, and eliminated those uses. But you'll see they're, they're marked out in red. Okay. So I think with that, we, we can open the public hearing. The public hearing is gonna be very much set up the same way as the one we just had. You have three minutes to address, Chairman, to make your point. There's a three-minute rule. If you hear the gavel, you're over three minutes. You come up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and tell us what you think about the, the new ag uses. Is anyone in the public?
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
I borrowed that from Bill Dunn.
Okay.
He did it once, so I thought I, you know, fill that in.
I thought I'd throw that up for you.
Okay. All right, please, again.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Then moved by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Knoll. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing on those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The public hearing is open. Anyone in the public wishing to speak? Please come up to the lectern, state your name and your address. Yes, ma'am.
Again, my name, my name is Carol Beckett. I live at 5717 Lake George Road in Dryden. I am here at the bequest of Larry and Amanda Shelton, who own property in Oxford Township. They live at 1855 East Oakwood Road in Oxford. And I quote, "We are the owners of 120-acre parcel in the agricultural district in the township. We find ourselves in the unenviable position of having to voice our concern to you, our representative government. Before we purchased our property, we met with the zoning township personnel to ensure that we would use the property we were considering buying for its intended use and our intended use. The zoning ordinance is a public document and as such is available to all. It seems to us that the proposed change to allow for institutional childcare as a matter of right in the agricultural district is an inconsistent use. It is being proposed for the sole purpose of allowing the proposed use at the southwest corner of East Davison Lake Road and Barbara Road. The attempt to change an allowable use over an entire district to accommodate a single user flies in the face of the entire zoning regime envisioned by the state constitution and state statutes. Our government is one of representative government. You, to this point, have not represented us, existing taxpayers who have maintained our properties and property values in pursuit, pursuit of a rural lifestyle. The master plan does not contemplate institutional uses on these properties, and the master plan is the guiding document established by the people of this township as the vision we have for our community. The state passed enabling legislation to allow for communities to establish zoning laws if they were in furtherance of a master plan. This should not be taken lightly. I don't think there is one of us who oppose foster care. And in fact, there are many family who, families who have and continue to foster children in our community. These children are welcomed into homes and families, not stockpiled in an institution that rotates staff with a ratio of four to six children per one paid staff. What we propose is wholesale change to the zoning districts and allowable uses in this area of the township as institutional uses and are inconsistent with agricultural uses. As we increase population and continue to destroy our agricultural areas, we are putting our food supply at risk. There is less land to grow food for people and for livestock. We are killing the habitat of bees, which are responsible for pollinating a large percentage of the foods we eat. The only way to safeguard our land, our environment, and our food sources is to make smart decisions at every level, individuals, families, communities, et cetera. Once the agricultural use is lost, it is lost forever, as was noted by Supervisor Dunn in a meeting last December. It is not a stretch to think that these institutional uses will commence complaining about agricultural uses and the odors that they pursue, produce, even when it was they who chose to settle in the agricultural area. Changing this zoning is allow, to allow for a more intensive use is very short sighted. It will destroy the unique character of this area so that we look more and more like every suburb south of us. It creates a slippery slope, allowing every potential buyer, user of land to come into Oxford and secure the appropriate decisions from government officials to suit their needs, not the community. And ultimately, it betrays the citizens who have bought, developed, and lived there in accordance with the laws that support the master plan envisioned by the community. We are asking that you do your job and protect the agricultural zoning and uses in this area. Once you destroy them, we will never get them back. This is representative government. The past public hearings have, and public outcry over this issue clearly show that the people you represent do not support the requested change. We would ask that you are not so shallow as to believe the lip service that we are a bunch of absentee rich landowners will only care about our horses. We personally farm 105 acres on our property. Most of us are people who grew up from meager beginnings and means, and who have worked hard to own a little piece of solitude in this ever crazy world. Most of us cut our own lawns, muck our own stalls, and run a tight budget in order to maintain a rural lifestyle. Our opinions and values are no less important. We are deserving and, in fact, assured of representation in our democratic government. Please do your job and keep the agricultural district agricultural. Yours very truly, Amanda and Larry Shelton, Oakwood Road, Oxford. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Again, another packet. Callie Rosner, 3100 Delano. I am in the agricultural zoning district. There seems to be a lot of confusion about, you know, what this process is. This is about zoning. This isn't about people who move into an area and wanna change its use because somebody thinks it's a good idea. The basis of zoning is that we set a master plan and then we make our ordinances match that master plan. If you wanna move into an area and change it, you need to change the ordinance. And that's the process. You don't come in and expect it to change for you. And that seems to be what's happening here. I also don't think the planning commission here understands the full repercussions of what it's doing by certain provisions of the act. First of all, you're making a change and adding a definition to the zoning district in agriculture and not uniformly applying it across other residential districts. You're also silencing the planning commission's voice and the community's voice to weigh on in facilities because the state law does allow the township to reject a facility when it oversaturates the area with residential facilities. Those need to be incorporated into our zoning district. The other very, very important key point is, on that first page I gave you, is Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Now, we're being told that the childcare institution is allowed by right because of this act. And I will contend that it is not. If you look at the title of the act, it says residential use of property, adult foster care facilities, and family and group childcare homes. Family and group childcare homes are, like our planner said, daycare facilities. Nowhere does the preemption in this act refer to a childcare institution. Okay? I wanna make that real clear. They're not allowed by right. When you flip the page there, the next page is from Linda Tansel, who's the licensing agent for the southeast Michigan area. She licenses House of Providence currently in Detroit in the Menucha Home, which has been sold, by the way. And her words at the very end are, "We encourage anyone who wants to open a child caring institution to check with the local zoning authority." Local zoning applies to childcare institutions. If institutional use is not allowed in the zoning district, it's not allowed by right. It has to get a permit from the township. They're not allowed in our zoning district. Agricultural doesn't permit it. The next page is the, the page, the printout, right from the Department of Health and Human Services website, if you looked at the box area. It says, "Obtaining a license for a child caring institution, five or more capacity, is contingent on zoning approval from the township." That's what it says. We expect that to be upheld. It's not allowed in our zoning district. If they wanna come in for a conditional rezoning, they have the right to do so. That's not what's happening here. They are not allowed by right. The next page, you see, is the excerpt from the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And I have that in there because it ties in what we've been saying. The master plan is the key document. That is the one the state puts the emphasis on and requires us to have. That has to be tied in, per law, as you see, to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which says the zoning ordinance shall be based upon a plan. And that plan is to encourage the use of lands in accordance with their character and adaptability. In this case, the highest and best use of this agricultural property is just that, agriculture. It's been considered a priority by the state to save agriculture. Putting in incompatible uses, institutional uses in residential neighborhoods in an agricultural zone is not a good practice. And the next few pages are excerpts from our current master plan. And if you look and flip through the pages there, you're gonna see words about equestrian living, the historic metamoral hunt, the importance of the contribution made by the equestrian agricultural lifestyle to the character of the township. Hunt country agriculture is designed to preserve the agricultural and equestrian character of the township and contributes greatly to the overall character of the area. Zoning, and the purpose of zoning is described in there. And under zoning techniques, it says that the planning commission, the zoning ordinance should be reviewed to ensure that it is consistent with the goals and objectives of, of the master plan. And it even talks about wanting to do subplans for the importance of the, quote, north wheat, the northeast quadrant horse country area. So where I'm going with all of this is the community has given you many proposals for implementing the master plan, preservation of the hunt country area, preservation of farmland and open space. They've been ignored by the planning commission for years now. It's something that you're charged with doing and so we're asking you really take a look at it. You promised us you would back in September. You've come somewhat a step forward in removing some of these. I'm gonna say a state licensed residential facility, as you have defined it, needs to be taken off. That's a whole nother discussion. It requires a whole nother public hearing where we have access to the information ahead of time and is not an open meetings violation. That needs to be applied across the board and you need to make sure the protections are in there to specify that that is an adult foster care facility or a daycare facility. That's what's allowed by right. You need to take off churches. You need to take off private elementary schools and public, private schools from the zoning district. They don't belong there. They're not going to save hunt country and they're not gonna preserve it. there. They're not going to save hunt country, and they're not going to preserve it. They certainly don't belong there. They belong on private or on public, you know, paved streets. So you haven't listened to us in those. You need to take those off. I've got mine in writing here. I've also been provided a copy of a letter from a neighbor in the area, and I don't know if you'd like me to read it or if the chair can read it. I believe that he did send the chair a copy as well.
Yeah, I've got that one.
Yeah, and he is asking that that be read into the record as well.
Is it from Mr. Zavolta?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I'll extend your time if you want to read that.
Okay. I'd be happy to read it for him. Okay. Dear Mr. Young, this is testimony against a proposed text amendment in the agricultural zoning district. Please include this communication in the public record and read into the record at the public comment section of the public hearing. The proposed amendment, which includes the addition of state licensed residential facilities only in the agricultural area, gives an open license to institutional facilities in our hunt country area and prevents us from enacting the safeguards of current legislation which allow townships to properly cite these institutions and prevent an excessive concentration of residential facilities within the township. This amendment essentially gives all township rights and silences -- gives away all township rights and silences the community voice. To put it in simple words, the Zoning Enabling Act is being misrepresented by the township. In your reasons, you are adding this amendment, and instead of protecting the community and upholding the ordinance and master plan, you are voluntarily waiving the township's right to compliance with the protections given in other acts. Contrary to what the township wants us to believe, the Oxford -- the Zoning Enabling Act does not give carte blanche or preemption to child caring institutions to set up a business in any residential neighborhood. The Act states, by analysis of the title, that the preemption from local zoning is only intended to apply for adult foster homes and family or child group homes, which are private homes, not institutionally owned facilities. In addition, Michigan law states that a license shall not be given if the establishment of a residential facility would create an excessive concentration of residential facilities within the township. By adding the blanket, quote, "We allow all residential facilities in the agricultural district," unquote, we give away all rights to the protection other acts would give to the township as a say to these types of facilities. One, we do not agree to the township's addition of state licensed residential facilities only in the agricultural zoning district. Two, we do not agree to keeping private schools or churches as a permitted use in the hunt country area. It is not in character with the area, and it is a use that is contrary to the master plan. It does not belong in the area. We do not have infrastructure to support any such use, nor do we want premature development by having to improve the infrastructure to accommodate such use, since the master plan clearly states that these improvements are not planned for this area. Three, we have submitted an official list of our zoning text amendments that are appropriate for the hunt country area, and they have been ignored by the Planning Commission. Our amendments confirm and conform to the master plan and update the ordinance to effectuate the master plan and must be adopted by the Planning Commission. We want the Planning Commission to make a resolution that childcare institutions are not equivalent to a single family residential use and are not appropriate in the hunt country area. Further, the Oxford Township -- further, Oxford Township already has a higher than normal level of childcare institutions, beds, 92 across rods. Licensing of additional childcare institutional facilities in Oxford would create an excessive concentration of these facilities in the township, burdening and changing the character of the community. Thank you. Kind reply, and then signed by the Zavotas.
I got a copy of it, too. So thanks, Callie.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Thank you. My name is Diane Kangus. I live at 5895 Hempstead Road, Oxford. I'm concerned why this Planning Commission and this township are discussing revising the zoning ordinances for less than 20% of its landmass area called agricultural at this time. The community who live in and around the ag area believe you are trying to change zoning terminology to desperately find a loophole for the specific benefit of the House of Providence, allowing them occupancy on an institutional building on Barber Road. Therefore, I have questions. And Mr. Berger, not to pick on you, but I'm trying to understand the source of how this all happened, and we're all in this room, and we got to this point. I ask you, therefore, Mr. Berger, as building inspector, when Maggie and Jason Dunn approached you for a building permit well over a year ago to build a home in the ag area, did you just accept it as a private family home at the time? When they submitted the plans, were you not aware of the fact that the House of Providence had intentions to become a child caring institution and not a single family home, especially since you're also on the Planning Commission and the agricultural community has been showing up for the past couple of years here voicing their distress over this business? Mr. Berger, did you go to the Planning Commission, your colleagues, and the township supervisor and say, "Hey, we've got a problem here. The zoning does not allow for child caring institutions. What should we do next?" It seems like you have saved -- you could have saved HOP a lot of time and money if you would have just told them at that point, rather than allowing them to begin a build on Barber Road. You even had a second opportunity to gracefully red flag and halt HOP when it was revealed that the site is loaded with lead in the soil, mark clearly right on the deed. Did you know that several other potential buyers of this land walked away from it as soon as they found out about the lead on that property? So weren't you immediately concerned with permitting a build of a facility for children of the state of Michigan and exposing those kids to lead? But you did not take any of these responsible actions, did you? Instead, you allowed Maggie and Jason to construct a 9,000 square foot home under false pretenses. Therefore, I would submit to you that you were either naive to understanding the zoning ordinances in the agricultural area and the well-established facts about lead poisoning, and any lead poisoning is detrimental to children's health and the neighbors, or you had other alternatives which were for the benefit of someone on this Planning Commission or the township board itself. And I know that these are really, really strong words that I'm saying here, but the fact is, these are all the things why I believe we need a clear explanation from you. How did you, in this room of public leaders, get to this point that we are at here tonight? A big house is built, and it is against the zoning rules for its intended use by the owners who are seeking occupancy for an institutional facility. Please explain.
Thank you. Is there anyone else out in the public wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Barbara Blonnik, and I live at 3601 Barber Road. I want to follow up on the comments that were just given, saying that once the landscape has changed in a community, it's very hard to bring it back to what it was before the change. And on Barber Road between Oakwood and Davison Lake, where the House of Providence purchased their property, on that road, if you exclude their property, there is a total of five houses. The length of the road between Oakwood and Davison Lake is one mile. One mile, five houses. That's extremely low density, I would say. I don't know how many of you live in comparable densities, but five houses in a one-mile-length road is pretty low density. In addition, in those five houses, there's a total of 10 occupants. 10. That again is low density. And that's what we, who have lived there since the 1970s, the 1950s, we go back a long time. That's the way we have lived our life and chosen to live our life in low density. Now, following up on what just what was said, Mr. Berger, who is not only on the Planning Commission but is the Oxford Township Building Inspector, on February 21, he granted a temporary certificate of occupancy to a ginormous building that is in size 8,928 square feet. Of the five houses I referred to that have been there for decades on Barber Road, the houses vary from 1,500 square feet to 3,000 square feet, which means this one facility, this one building, this enormous gigantic barn, or whatever it is or supposed to be, is larger than all the existing homes on Barber Road combined. What I find strange is a home that is built today normally has a garage. Would that be right, Mr. Berger?
Typically.
Typically. Yet this facility, or this building of 8,928 square feet, doesn't have a garage. Normally, if you build a home, a home, and your permit said that this building was without a garage, is a residential single family, you made that determination. You didn't call it a facility or some other kind of industrial building. You called it a residential single family. Another oddity is that in this home, there is a bathroom, which all of us have in our homes, five toilets in a row. Do you all have that in your home? A bathroom with five toilets in one bathroom? Five showers in one bathroom? That's very unique, isn't it? And three sinks. I don't know why we didn't get five sinks, but we got three. Maybe we ran out of room because the building is only 8,928 square feet. So what I'm saying to you, we have an area that is low density at the moment, but in just this one little approval given by Mr. Berger, we have doubled, doubled the size of the buildings on our road, and we are soon to more than double the number of people living on our road. I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Benson, again, 3270 Barber Road. There are several things that we asked for on the changes on this that haven't been addressed. I mean, it's almost like, you know, I'm trying to figure out exactly, is it the PC board that decides this, or have you been told by somebody else to just flip us the bird and, you know, kind of screw the neighborhood and put these other uses in that we've asked not to be in? I think at one point, we actually turned in signatures with the request to change those zoning ordinances of half the people in the agricultural zoning, asking you to make those changes. Somehow, all the signatures have disappeared, but luckily, we made copies, if anyone would like to find -- like to see them. We asked that there wasn't going to be any institutions, no churches, no schools. Already Kingsbury School puts a lot of traffic down Oakwood Road every morning and night during school year. We're trying to avoid that. We don't want any more traffic out there. We don't want these uses. We've asked that you made an exception for the campgrounds. I see that you put in that we aren't going to have campgrounds. That's good. We asked that you keep the temporary campgrounds at the horse facilities on Delano, Rattlewood, and also at Winneconne on Delano. I know John Knoll told me he couldn't in good conscience put that in there because it's not in any other zoning, but then you stick in that we'll accept that all facilities for all residential use facilities are going to be accepted in agriculture only. The place that it's least likely to fit in is where you've determined that that's going to be a great use for us. Saying that we should accept any licensed residential facility opens the doors like it did in Brandon, where people, this group, would come in and buy up foreclosed homes for cheap and put in residential facilities that were halfway houses or drug rehab houses or, in one case, at the end of a cul-de-sac with children on both sides of them, put in a group of pedophiles. That's the kind of stuff that we're trying to avoid here. We specifically asked, actually, we took the wording from Brandon, for the certain types of foster homes or residential homes that we would accept in our township. And it's all gone. I mean, I really don't understand it. We had half the people in ag zoning ask for it, and you've ignored that. We asked that, oh, gosh, I don't have my notes in front of me. There were several things that you left off what we asked for, and I hope that you will go back over that list. Contact us if you don't have the list anymore. Stuff has been disappearing out of the file at the township offices, I know. But if you are interested at all in the things that we're interested in, that we want in our township and don't want in our neighborhood, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir?
Dr. Bruce Myers, Delano Road, Oxford Township. First thing, I'd like to wonder how things got kind of misinterpreted with each other. I'm trying to figure out how you determine the CCI is equal to a daycare center. That kind of befuddles me. I didn't think HOP was doing daycare. I'd like to point out how disappointed that I am in the township and the blatant push to serve House of Providence. Even this meeting is obvious. We, as a neighborhood, have submitted updated definitions to the Planning Commission as well as the Township Board. This meeting should be legally addressing those changes, not the changes that are being addressed here tonight. I wonder how many of you are actually looking at what people are speaking here that actually live in that area, that actually live in the township. There's been a little bit of misrepresentation by some people saying they're in the township, and they weren't. This puts you, as members of the Planning Commission, in jeopardy. We have a township supervisor that has control of the Planning Commission, which is not appropriate. This has resulted in manipulation of the meeting of the Planning Commission as well as manipulation of the agenda. He has shown up at Planning Commission meetings, named himself with his title, and told you how to run the meeting with a veiled threat, telling you what to do. This is obviously a violation. You have the House of Providence people sending a letter to the State Attorney General's office stating that the township has approved everything that they want, and with open arms. If they need to check, they can call it to Yana Cushing. I don't remember ever hearing anything giving her the right to approve anything related to House of Providence by the Planning Commission or the trustees. Because of the undue influence that you are pressured to skirt ordinances and processes, or that you have to deal with the supervisor or the deputy supervisor and be subject to wrath, so you basically are being influenced here. If you approve these changes here today, you will be obviously in violation of many laws knowingly and willingly. If you don't approve them, you have the supervisor and deputy supervisor to contend with. Basically, think of the consequences. These range from having an employee of the township acting as a plan -- on the Planning Commission and has ex parte communication with the House of Providence team. Basically, you're building inspector. The township tried to get around that by saying he's not an employee, he's on contract. Well, by law, the building inspector has to be an employee of the township. There are obvious attempts to skirt the issue, but remember, he is an employee of the township, no matter how you're going to look at it. You have an electrical inspector being the husband of a board member. You have a mechanical inspector married to one of the building department employees. The list goes on, but you get the idea. The list goes on, but you get the idea. Too many people directly with the township are financially benefiting from the House of Providence. Obvious manipulation, the canceling of planning commission meetings, not having the required public hearings, not having the legal notices resulting in open meeting violations. Even tonight, I think that's stretching it by not having the documents available to the public before the meeting. Scheduling this meeting with you, and you all knowing that we have sent in text amendments for you to look at, we sent them in to the township trustees as well as to you, and yet, they're being held up. They were held up also because we were told that there has to be fees paid, and these fees change and keep going up every time we check on it. The fees are obviously punitive, and this is to deny any of you looking at them officially. If you look through your minutes going back, I don't know how many years, there is no fee set by the board for a zoning text amendment. So therefore, the township is considering this a zoning change, which is not. It's not the same. So I say it again, you are in a precarious position. At least one of you should be recusing themselves. Anything you all do puts you at risk with either the township powers or the consequences of the law. So you're in an awkward position. You, as chair of the committee, had the ability to put things on the agenda before. You promised us in the past that you would be addressing these things. Am I to think that your word is worthless, or that you are? I would hope that you would look at this properly and do the right thing here, because you have given your word. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Larry Rosner, eighteen-thirty Cobblestone Lane, Oxford, Michigan. I've been sitting quietly while I heard that, you know, we're liars, we're this, we're that, and I'll be a little more kind in my reference, because obviously, someone was very wrong. I can read a little note here. While seemingly well-intended, increasing the capacity and concentration of the foster use could negatively impact the goals of providing foster care youth. That went to the Michigan House of Representatives, Michigan Senate, State Capitol Building, Lansing, as Governor Snyder at that point in time vetoed this. That was the reason why. We've heard about this, and we've heard tonight, oh, I've heard time and time again, oh, it's only seven or eight people. Well, somehow, the board managed to, you know, lose some of the documentation when fifty percent or more of the people living there was wanting this change back in two thousand seventeen, and I gave you copies of that. And, you know, the person that said, gee, he didn't know why the governor vetoed it. I was in Lansing twice. Our representative, Mr. Riley, who doesn't seem to understand that we all are for foster care homes, we're not, we're not for institutions. The governor recognized institutions, and the person that said, we don't know, he wasn't aware of this. Well, the two times I was in Lansing, he was there. This was discussed. Riley was there, the representative that don't represent our area, and we've told him that. But you represent our area, so we've heard a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I gave you a copy of this.
Yes. Thank you. Sir, in the, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name's, hi, my name is Victor Zanuegas. I live on thirty-four oh five Rock Valley Road, Metamora, and I'm also president of the Metamora Land Preservation Alliance, so we kind of have a, it's a different category, but it's a similar situation that we're dealing with relative to large-scale gravel mining up in Metamora Township. So I'm way, way, way more familiar with the zoning enabling act than I ever hoped I would have been, and I've been to more meetings than up in Lansing, and Planning Commission, you guys have a tough job, and I know that you're not paid a fortune to sit in those chairs and spend your Monday nights dealing with, dealing with this, but, and your job's about understanding the past, it's about dealing with the present, and it's about what's going to happen in the future, and this is the present. It's represented extremely well. But this, I think your decision and what you're dealing with now is about the future, and if there's one thing I've learned dealing with Lansing, is that if an amendment comes up or a rule says, all right, ten people this year, next year it could be twenty people, next year it could be thirty people, it's really unpredictable, and it then comes out of local control. And I think that that would be a big concern of mine if I were sitting on the planning commission, that what you set up now and the guidelines that come into place, and then Lansing, if you allow it, that Lansing can come in and kind of overstep that. And so, when I talk about the past, and I've lived out here since nineteen ninety, I've probably gone through five or six windshields from the gravel trucks. We all have, and I wonder, and I don't know how long everyone's been around, but I wonder if the planning commissions fifty years ago, when they approved gravel mining, or however long it was, knew the impact that that would have on this area. This is gravel, this is the gravel capital of the world, and that's not really a great thing. And so, so, and I really honestly, I don't know what the right decision is. I don't understand enough about this issue, but what I do understand is that fifty years ago, the planning commission probably, if they were alive and sitting here and were driving down M twenty-four through the ruts and breaking their windshields, they probably think, you know, we'd like a do-over when we allowed Levy or whoever the gravel people in and let them expand and expand, and they'd say, yeah, we'd probably do it differently. We would like a do-over. And I hope that, whatever decision you make, and, boy, there's a lot of passion on both sides, and I really believe this is not about racism or against children, or, I really, I think this is about good, smart government and how that impacts the community. So I just hope that, and I'm an optimist, I think that it's not too late to stop and really consider what's going on, you know, it's kind of like when in doubt, stand out. There's no ticking clock here, and, but what I think you don't want to be is twenty years from now, looking at a planning commission meeting and having them say, boy, I wish in two thousand and nineteen, the planning commission asked for a do-over, and I'm sure you'll consider that and do the right thing. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the audience wishing to speak on the public hearing for the ag district Okay, seeing none, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support. Thank you. Been moved by Mr. Knoll, supported by Mr. Berger. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion passes, so public hearing is now closed. Now we'll have comments from our planner and discussion amongst the commissioners alone. I mean, not alone, within ourselves, so there's no more public comment. So, planner?
And the only, again, I want to emphasize that the current ordinance allows child or adult family daycare homes. The proposed ordinance is simply going to take that language, reference the state zoning act, and also specifically reference the MCL numbers. So we are not changing what is currently allowed. All we're doing is we're modifying it and clarifying it so that it is more consistent with state statute. You served on the ORC. I serve on the ORC. We've spent a lot of time going over this. We have gathered information in writing. I do have a copy of your signatures from your packet that was submitted last year. Don't quote me, September, October. We use that as input into the meeting. I've used input from each one of you here, each, not each one of you here, but input from the, from the public who has verbally talked with me in regards to their thoughts and comments. We tried to mirror image things of that packet that was given to us. The campground scenario that was brought up, we can't have a campground, in my opinion, out there and not have it within the entire district, and that was what our conversation was. I couldn't consciously go along with that. So I feel that the package that we've put together and submitted here is a good package. It's required a lot of thought. We've had a lot of planners working on it. I do have a problem that Callie brought up, in regards to information not being out. I have some questions on that if we want to forward that along tonight, so that would be a question that I have.
What's your question, exactly?
Do we want to postpone?
Oh, I, yeah, let me get a few more comments on, Owen, any questions that, you know, the rest of the listeners are going to get, we'll figure out what we're going to do. Okay. So, anything?
Just as the new person on the commission, I realize that I am here against the better desires of many of you. I see both sides of the situation, I really do, and I think that we can find a balance between the two. I'm sorry that it's come to this, that it's become so divisive, that it's become so controversial, and I would like to be able to see a way through this together as a community instead of two factions, because I think we do believe in caring for our children, especially those of our community that are disadvantaged, and it's not their fault. I don't think there's anybody here that truly spites those kids. I would just like to see a balance and a working together as we move through it.
My turn?
Yeah, couple. Since I've been on the ORC, I was asked back to it, I don't think that in specific components of any particular timetable, I'm trying to relate to how this got started. We were asked to look at all types of districts within the township and permitted uses in the township, and somehow, the ag use just came up as the one that seemed to be prioritized, and we heard a lot of comments about different types of uses that were permitted in the agricultural district, and we should be looking at them, and it was, a lot of times at different meetings, sometimes people made public comments, sometimes they were related to things that were happening throughout the community. So when we first started looking at this in particular, I said, what is allowed and what is not allowed? So, and we did seek legal counsel on part of this to try and make some of these decisions, and if we're not, and I brought some notes to my attention tonight to say, if we're not allowed to have childcare licensing facilities or something, maybe we, I would like to see if, and I didn't know that we could eliminate schools off property, someone talked about taking schools out of the mix, and they talked about taking churches out of the mix. I guess I didn't feel those were extremely detrimental, but then I thought, maybe they could be sitting here listening tonight, so I circled those as part of a component to maybe go back and look into this, and then look at some of the other issues. I think we did a pretty good job on how we tried to delineate components within these special uses based on information that we heard the public asking us to look at. We were asked to look at campgrounds, we were asked to look at commercial greenhouses, we were asked to look at outdoor recreation, we were asked to look at country clubs, we were asked to look at golf courses, we were asked to look at kennels, and all these different, and composting was a big issue at one time, and so we said, well, we want people to have the type of property that if they did composting on their own property, how could they do it? So we, we said, well, there's a way they can do it through the Right to Farm Act, so we utilized the Right to Farm Act and a few of these conditions in here to say, if they file and comply the agro-business uses within those acts, then they should be fine with what we thought people would want on the properties. We did try to extract, and we took out almost a dozen uses that were currently permitted within the ordinance. This was all new to me. I've always said I love the area out there, I didn't want to change anything north of Ray Road, you know, in that quadrant. So I'm not trying to create anything that wouldn't be, other than keeping it in the state that it's in. I mean, that's not my goal, to try and make something more dense or less dense or whatever, but I guess we did try to take the information that we heard a lot of times from the public and put it into a, something that we thought was going to be better for the ag district. Maybe we didn't hit all the nails on the head. I got a couple of questions and circled some things to go back and look at. So I think if we're going to postpone it, it gives us a chance to maybe do that, if, before we take action and move it on any further, so I'd be inclined to do that.
Okay. I know this went under review of the attorney in December and in January, because whatever we put forth, we want to make sure that it's legally recovered, and doing the right thing by the state, the local state. And that does take time, that review. I did hear one comment out there about the foster care uses or whatever, only being in the ag district. The reason the ag district got started was, yeah, there was a lot of tension drawn to it from people at a joint meeting that we had.
It was last year.
Last year, back in first quarter, I think it was, and subsequently, a lot of discussion about all these special uses that shouldn't be out there, so that's why the ag district got picked first. We're going to go review the other uses in all the other districts as well, too, but it's a long process, so those homes or whatever may, more than likely, they'll be in all the districts, okay, depending on the law. I also circled the word church and school as well, and I'd have to go back and check legally if that's something you can really take out.
Churches, you could get into federal issues. The Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act, or it's commonly called ARLUPA. If you took churches out of the ag but still allowed residential, you could be setting yourself up for a federal challenge, but I would refer that to the township attorney and let them comment on it.
Okay. Well, in regards to that, Don, what about schools?
The same thing. It's not, it's not federal, but there is a, the, one of the, one of the state education funding acts had very clear limitations on what local municipalities can do, so that would be another item that I would refer this to the township attorney on. Usually, when you have residential, you allow churches and, what was the other one? Schools. When you have residential, you usually allow most communities, the communities that are firm services, you would allow firm services, you would allow, if you have residential, you're going to be allowing churches and schools.
Well, my comment was, I mean, I wrote myself a note, can we eliminate this? I mean, legally, can we or not? That's, we have to ask.
On the churches?
Yeah. Or the schools.
I think you'd be setting yourself up for a challenge.
Well, I guess we'll find out. I guess we'll try to find out.
I wouldn't recommend it, but you could refer that to the township attorney.
Well, what about the child and adult family care then?
That is very clear. I think that's, what we're doing now is consistent with state law. And we have a memorandum from the township attorney on this. They did review it. So we are consistent.
Okay. Well, I think the ORC did a good job of double checking, got in the eye. I hope all those things that we heard from the public that they didn't want to see out there are gone. I think they are, from the way I read the list.
Why didn't?
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure all of them are, because I wrote a couple more down that we still get, got comment on that we still have in here. So whether we can take them out or not is the issue I'm trying to ask myself.
So I have two. Which one did you have?
Well, the three I basically had is, and I guess we have the attorney's opinion on the child and adult family care, but we have churches and schools, which were still brought up again.
Right.
And I think we covered almost, I think we covered almost all the rest. If I'm wrong, then maybe someone will have to bring it to my attention.
That said, and in the interest not to violate an open meetings act or anything, if it brought to my attention, the public or a few members of the public were not given access to all the documents in the package, namely, the planner's review for this, for the ag. So in that, I do suggest that we postpone any action.
I think we should make a motion to postpone.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to postpone this until, I don't know which date, I'm going to say future date.
If you're going to postpone it, you need to pick.
A date?
A date. You could say the next regular meeting.
Well, I'll do that.
If you had to postpone it from there, you could do that.
But what if we're not prepared by then?
Then you would have to postpone it at that time. If you're going to postpone it, you need to, so people know.
So we bring it in as old business? Ongoing business?
No.
No.
Well, I don't want to do it that way.
No, because you're not tabling it. You're not saying side.
Well, then I'll make a motion to postpone it until the next regular planning commission.
I'll second that.
Because I don't know that date.
Been moved by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Nold. Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll postpone that.
Let's take a small recess.
I think, yeah, at this time, we've got three or four more items on the agenda to go through, but if you don't want to stick around for that, we're going to take a two-minute recess and reconvene. Those who don't want to stay, you're welcome to come out. I do appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
CJ, yeah. How you doing, CJ? No, there was a. No, you can't have it, but you could look at it. It's my only, it's my only. But Susan and Gary, they just reiterated that local zoning is preemptive.
Oh, this one? So I asked.
Yeah. It's, we, our hands are tied. Yeah, I don't recall that one. Yeah, 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 yeah. Do they want to take, do they want to take residential out of the ag and just have farms? But then you can't live there? Maybe we should do that.
I like picking down some trees.
Yeah. Rihanna Egger.
Some of those properties there, like.
Yeah. I work at Hassett Providence. Yeah, I've been the therapist on staff there for about three years.
Hey, folks, can we get you to move out to the hallway, please?
I'm not coming any closer to your building.
Because it's in the packet. They give you a packet. It's got all the information.
Unless M.D. comes to you and says, Oxford leader, we have, we're going to make you an offer to take five feet of your land. Yeah, there's some, there's some green belt area. There's an area, yeah, like you say, the lawn.
Appreciate you coming out.
Yeah. Still in there right away. Yeah, because there's supposed to be more. People are trying to.
For the benefit of everybody.
I just have a good real estate division. I haven't approached you yet or come to you for an easement or something, then. M.D. doesn't usually do easements. He actually will take. No, to my knowledge.
I can email it to you.
Thank you.
I probably have your email.
I figured it must not be too important, just for you to call me back, so.
Yeah.
Called me on Friday. I called you on Monday.
We all just closed on some property.
Hey, folks, can you make, can you make me? Can we make our way out to the hallway, please?
You just want the part with the amendments.
Yeah, you should have.
Because I don't really have anything to say. Well, you know.
Right, yeah. Ron's here.
Talk about Seymour Lake Park.
Yeah, because we got elections officers. Engineer this one right here.
What's that?
Me, too. I pretty much.
Read the paper today. Got it in there. Unless you're at home, I got it in the daylight today.
We're going to do the.
All right, we'll see, bud.
The next public hearing.
Okay, if you're not going to stick around, please head out through the hallway. We're going to start again, folks.
I don't know. Is the mic on? Oh, they're leaving.
Maybe mine's not so good.
So how's work?
Coming to this one night, yeah. One time that Lauren's out of town.
I told her she owes me a beer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, really. Or her husband's.
All right, as a matter of order, and I know it's getting pretty late. I'd like to make a change to the schedule. Okay to do?
The agenda?
The agenda. Should have to make a motion earlier. Make a motion to change it?
Do we need a motion to change the agenda?
Very appropriate.
Very appropriate.
Yeah, technically, you would.
Technically, we'd have to make a motion.
I make a motion that we move, that we change the agenda accordingly to what the chairman would like to have.
Yes, I'd like to have item 3B moved up after 8A.
That's fine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
So we have an agenda, we have an agenda that's been amended.
We have an amended agenda.
And we're taking B and putting it to, we're taking 10B and moving it to 8B.
What is in store for us?
So we're going to move to new business amended final site plan. Is the petitioner here?
We're not in a clear room, don't we? We know how to clear a room.
Yeah, yeah. Get Ron, get Ron Davis up here. Clear them out.
There's just one dude in the back.
I wonder if people really think of something. One thing I've learned is don't do or say anything during the day that'll keep you up at night. I wonder how some of these people sleep at night.
Why didn't you tell me that last?
I just, I just don't understand. I really don't.
I'd like to make a motion to ask the sheriff's deputy he could have a seat.
Yeah.
Standing for three and a half hours.
Or you might be able to be relieved. At this point, I think you might be okay.
I think we're safe now.
The only reason he's here is because of Parks and Rec. Come on, let's call it that. So basically, what we're looking for is an amendment to our site plan, folks. We put the, we're putting a driveway in off Seymour. If you go by there, it looks like we've already accessed it. We took the fence down for consumers' power to run our natural gas through there. And then we had cable move in two weeks ago. So if you've just seen that parking lot we had, it was like knee-deep in mud. So we created that. So we've got our Oakland County permit. It's already been approved. We've got our culvert. Sarah Dan will be doing all the site work for us, putting the culvert in. They're going to pull the bond with the county. Mr. Sharp did all the engineering plans. Like I said, everything's been approved at the county. So the reason we switched it, where it currently was, came off the parking lot and went adjacent down the side of the building. Well, my goal is to build a farmer's market pavilion out there on that east end of the parking lot. So that would ruin that whole concept. Then we want to use that open green space next to the cable building for our senior horseshoe pits, maybe, or shuffleboard courts. So if you run that driveway down there, it just wasted that green space. So it didn't make good use of the, of the real estate. So Jim and I talked, I said, hey, how about this? Let's do this. And he said, okay, if you think so. He helped me apply to the county, and they approved it, and here we are. So it's just for their van. It'll have a chain on it, because we certainly don't want people trying to come into the park that way. And Connie, I hate to put you on the spot, but do you guys access that van, what, three, four times a week, maybe? Yeah, so it's not like we got traffic coming in all the time. So the staff, the cable staff parks in the parking lot, which hopefully, we're going to have completed first of June. We were fortunate enough to save some bond money to pay for that. So I think we sent bids out or.
I was waiting till tonight to see if the.
See if this goes through.
To see if this goes through, and then we'll send it out tomorrow to potential.
Yeah, so we want to get going on securing, get all that done ASAP. So that's where I'm at with the, the asking of the driveway.
So at the top of it? Do you have two poles in the chain there or?
We'll put a, we'll put some kind of gate there for the staff, for the cable staff. They'll have a key for it. There'll be enough room to come in off the road. Of course, there'll probably be on this side of the split rail fence.
Will there be a sign of any kind?
We put up a sign like we do at the back of the park, says maintenance vehicles only or, I mean, when you're dealing with the general public, it doesn't matter what it says. If they want in, they're coming in. So we'll do something where we bring that split rail in or something. We'll figure something out, trust me. I always say, if anyone's nervous about that park, it'll be me before and you guys. So we'll do what we can to.
And I think you need to have just enough room to have, when you come in safely off the roadway.
Yeah.
And have a full length of maybe a couple vehicles, even if there was somebody that had to help another one or something.
Right, yeah. That's why I said, set that gate back.
Yeah, and it's, we tried some things in Orion Township at one time, where we tried to use chains and then put little labels and stuff on. They just don't work well.
No.
You almost have to have a gate-type device. It doesn't have to be fancy.
No.
It can just be anything that swings.
Yeah.
Or opens or does something. And they only need it for, how many, what do you think, you know, what their timetable would be for use? I mean, how often would they have to use it? It's just. All the larger things where equipment's got to come and go.
Yeah.
Is that once a week or twice a week? Oh, yeah.
And the vans kept right in the garage. I mean, when they, while we designed that, everything's inside, so.
Yeah, just make sure it's safe to pull in and off. And it's a driveway permit, that's all it is.
Like I said, and the county did, you know, the county did their homework. They approved.
Well, it's a driveway permit, not a road.
No, right, yeah, it's going to.
It's only for the OCTV people.
Absolutely.
I have no problem with it.
It's one lane.
I just, yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody understands it's a driveway, not a roadway.
It's a driveway.
It's not for the public.
It leads to nowhere.
But you need to put private use or something on there, just wording.
We'll do something. We'll put proper signage.
I'd put a sign that's fairly large, you know, like, whether they read it or not, I don't, you know, how it goes.
You know how it is out there.
They'll bang away if they want it. They'll bang right through it.
I know.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the amended site plan. If discussion's all done.
I have one more question to Don. You mentioned a waiver about the driveway.
That's what it is. It's, yeah, it is a waiver. And section 83D does specifically allow the planning commission to issue a waiver. Okay, this is not a variance, doesn't need to go to the ZBA, but rather, it's a waiver. And there's criteria in there. The property's got to be 300 feet of frontage, and you got well over that.
We got well over that.
It's got to comply with Oakland County standards, and you've already gotten your permit. So there's certain criteria in there, but I feel that they do comply. So in that sense, I feel that the waiver request is acceptable.
Should your motion include?
I was going to say.
I would like to change my motion to include that it be a accepted amended site plan as a waiver for the driveway.
Well, why don't you say per section 83D?
Per section 83D.
Yes. But then I, then I like that better.
I second your motion.
Well, it's, it's your motion, but I just thought for, it makes it better, it details it out.
All right, you accepted that for the waiver? For your motion?
I think someone else seconded it, right?
Right, it's been moved by Mr. Nold, seconded by Mr. Berger.
Okay.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, let's go back to.
Well, this, this is a public hearing. We're going to go back to, it's actually going to be.
Correct.
Public here, this is going to be C.
Now, we're going back to the C item, number eight. Purpose of the public hearing is to hear public comments on proposed amendments to zoning ordinance 67A regarding amending the text of section 8.1 to make this section consistent with section 16.3 of the zoning ordinance, which addresses zoning compliance permits and exceptions thereto, amending the text of sections 11.2, 11.3, 11.4, 11.7, and 11.8 of the zoning ordinance to provide that proposed plans for private roads to comply with the Engineering Design Standards Ordinance, amending the text sections of 11.2B and 11.2E to make these sections consistent with sections 8.1 and 16.3 of the zoning ordinance, and amending the text section 13.9 of the zoning ordinance to provide that proposed plans for improvements in a condominium shall comply with the design, Engineering Design Standards Ordinance. We have the petitioner present.
I think that would be me.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, this is really just an update. The township is in the process of modifying the engineering design standards. The township attorney's been working on it, and I know Jim's going to be involved in this regarding some of the specifics. But the township engineering standards is particularly pertinent to the chapter on private roads that's in the zoning ordinance. So what the township attorney, what they did was they rewrote. So, um, what the township attorney, uh, what they did was they rewrote the various changes. Uh, it references the engineering and design standards, it talks about the frontage requirements, et cetera. Uh, it talks about the engineering requirements and, um, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's really just more of a technicality. I don't know if it came up regarding a particular development, Jim? Do you know the history?
It has not. Like I say, I think the township attorney, what it used to be called, I think it's in your redline version.
Uh.
It used to be called like the, uh, what was it there?
Where is that?
Oxford Design Standard.
It was Oxford Design Standard.
Instruction, specifications, manual.
Yeah.
That was from like twenty years ago or something.
Way outdated.
So I think, I think that the, the township attorney is just updating it to what it is called now, which is just the engineering design standards.
Right. He's replaced the app every single.
Correct.
Location, yeah. Um, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Well.
Move to item two.
We have to actually.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing?
Yeah, we have to open the, I second the motion.
Then moved by Mr. Knoll, seconded by Mr. Burger. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak? I gave you a fair shot, I mean.
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none? I'd look for a move.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Knoll, seconded by Mr. Burger. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Um, let's get some comments from, uh, the planner, if there are any additional ones or any.
Nothing additional.
Okay. Uh, anything from the commissioners?
No, other than the fact that what this does is it will bring us in, it'll put us in a position of taking outdated, uh, ordinance conditions and getting us into the standards of what we need for today's practices.
Yeah.
And Mr. Sharp will be involved, uh, as the township engineer in regards to taking care of that, and I feel comfortable with making these changes.
Any other comments?
I feel very comfortable making these changes. Twenty years out, we're gonna appreciate our work here today.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay. Then I would look for a.
I make a motion to, uh, to move this to the, forward this to the township board.
Second.
That's a recommendation to the township board, correct?
Yes.
Well, technically, excuse me, is it open for discussion yet? Has it been seconded?
Moved by Mr. Knoll, seconded.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I guess we, we need to make sure that we're making a motion as a recommendation to the township board as proposed by the planning commission to approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance. So, this is long as the wording is such that.
I second that.
You accept that amendment?
Okay.
Amended motion?
Yes.
Yes.
You reseconded? Okay. Then reseconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. That recommendation will move forward to the township board. Item three, two, unfinished business, there is none. New business, election of officers. Before we start this, I just wanna note that I did hear from Mr. Hunwick, who has an excused absence this evening. He did indicate to me, um, and I have it in writing, he will accept any nomination or position. It's executed tonight.
I make a motion that Mr. Young act as, or continue on as chairperson?
I second the motion.
I don't think we need to, we just.
You just nominate them.
Oh, I think you can nominate.
And then you support the nomination.
I support the nomination.
Okay, uh.
And then.
I, I accept.
You would accept or?
There were no other nominations, so Commissioner Young, myself will remain the chairman for the twenty nineteen year by unanimous consent.
I make a nomination that, uh, Mr. Burger be vice chairman?
I, I support that nomination?
Seeing nobody else, I'll accept that position.
Okay, as there were no other nominations, Mr. Burger, you will be the vice chairman twenty nineteen by unanimous consent.
And I make a nomination that Mr. Hunwick remain the secretary.
I'll second that. Oh, we don't have to second that.
Uh, yeah.
So I'll support that.
I'll support that nomination. Uh, he accepts, since there were no other nominations, Commissioner Hunwick will serve as the secretary for twenty nineteen by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's move to committee assignment. Um, for the economic development committee, um, I'm actually gonna leave those members intact, so those members will be, uh, Mike Spiz, Jack Curtis, and myself. Uh, C two, ordinance review committee. I think you guys worked really well together in the past, so I'm gonna continue that into twenty nineteen with John Knoll, Ed Hunwick, and Tom Burger. Uh, item C three. Uh, this one, I think we need to have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion.
Pointee to the township board.
I'd like to make a motion as a recommendation to the township board to appoint, uh, John Knoll, uh, as the representative from the PC to the zoning board of appeals.
It's been moved by Mr. Burger, seconded in by Ms. Knoff. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes. We will make our recommendation to the township board that Mr. Knoll, uh, is the PC representative on the ZBA. Uh, let's move to item four, communications and committee, committee reports. Um, number one, economic development committee, normally Mr. Curtis, uh, speaks on that. There have been no meetings recently, and I think we're gonna look into the near future, uh, what the path holds for the EDC, and that may change in the near future, so. No meeting scheduled at this time. A two, ordinance review committee?
I think we got hammered pretty good tonight.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if we, you know, but, but wait a minute. You know, in all fairness, I did, I did bring stuff with me, I just got a little distorted here. Um, we, we held a meeting on, uh, the fourteenth of this month, and, uh, we have, uh, things that have been brought to our attention that we're not reviewing, you know, because we've been kinda busy with all the agricultural concerns and some of the other stuff, and we looked back at our previous schedule that we had and what we've completed and what we haven't completed, and we came up with a format of where we're prioritizing what we think is, uh, best to move forward with. Now, we have, all of us on the, on the ordinance review committee have opinions of ordinances that we think we need to look at and make amendments to, but it clouds the necessary work to get some of the other things done that we, uh, need to work on. And, uh, we kinda prioritized in number one position, we had outdoor, uh, or outside dining, outdoor dining, whichever one you wanna call it, and we had attached and detached accessory buildings, uh, the floor area calculations. There's been a concern there over time and over a period that maybe we should be looking at those, so we prioritized them in a, a position of putting those things forward in the next, um, meetings, agendas. And number two, we had, uh, and we also prioritized, I forgot number one position, is the, a mobile food vending and food truck, uh, things that have been happening more and more with the, the community, cause we don't really have anything very definitive in regards to how they're permitted and how they're utilized throughout the community and who can have them and when and how many days and all that. So that's something we need to look at, and then we kinda put in number two, uh, the PUD ordinance that needs some updating and, um, and we're, was still behind on that, and then kinda like with three, we went into the, uh, two tiers of multifamily zoning, uh, related to density, cause we need to be looking at that, and we also need to be looking at the mixed use zoning, which we haven't done in quite some time, and also the sign ordinance, which we have had on the list for quite a while.
Yep.
But, you know, actually, you know, we have had pretty lengthy meetings and all fairness, we're trying to get as much done in the timeframe that we have, and we have met regularly. I mean, even when the planning commission hasn't had meetings or hasn't met in that month, we still meet and we try to get, uh, our finger on some things to move them forward. Sometimes the delay tactics work with, uh, what we need from opinions off the attorney or somebody that has to give us, uh, a guidance as to whether we may or may not be able to make the changes we're amending, so we don't wanna bring something to you that we don't think we can actually accomplish, and tonight I got confused about maybe a couple things. We think we have all the legal data to back up what we've done for the agricultural district, but we get a lot of opposition in regards to it, and I guess if they have to see it from the legal representatives that represent the township.
Amen.
That might be what we have to do, and so if we can, if we can eliminate schools or if we can eliminate churches or if we can eliminate daycare facility, or childcare facilities as such and, and how they're utilized on residential properties, um, then we'll have to have legal counsel point that out so that people understand it's not us, it's rules that are promulgated through the state of Michigan that dictate a higher, um, level of enforcement. So, I think, you know, I, I like what people have for concern sometimes, but we can't always meet those concerns.
Right.
So we're, we're trying. I mean, we really have spent some time on this. I don't, I don't think the people realize that we have spent this much time. You know, we wrote the, the solar ordinance and got that out of the way, you know, we, we put time into the rezoning criteria, we did street tree requirements and all these other things that we've already processed and gotten through the, the amendments and, and made changes, so we're working in the right direction. I, I will tell you there, like when Mr. Sharp brought up the idea that some of these things might be as old as fifteen, twenty years down the road, we have ordinances in place that have been on the books for a long time that, that need to be looked at and amended to meet the standards of what we're doing and how we're living today. So, and we're not there yet. I mean, you, you could almost, you could spend a lot of time and hours on it, and we only can get so much done from the times that we meet, and what the board, I hate to say we're squeezed, but what they authorize us to put into this in hours and time and money. So the board has to approve this, and right now, we have a list that the board has actually already approved, and so we're gonna work to that list first.
Okay. You've got a running list, right?
Yes.
Okay, so with that list, just so you can keep track of it, I need you to add one thing that's coming out.
Oh, no, so you're adding.
Okay. Coming down from one of the, uh, trustees.
All right.
And I've got paperwork that I'll share with you later.
Okay.
Uh, but just write down, uh, review of noise ordinance. Just so we're tracking.
Well, I wrote tonight, review of noise ordinance for Mr. Young.
Does that include your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, anything else from the planner?
It's good to see everybody again.